This conference will now be recorded.
Hi, it's noon today, October 6th, it's a Tuesday, and we're here for the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Work Sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the Board wishing to address the Board are welcome to do so during the Board's directly scheduled meeting held twice monthly. Okay, so we have about five minutes to have a check-in with the Commissioners. Who would like to go first? Okay, Commissioner Thompson, thank you.
Okay, well, health issues in my family, and nobody, I can't say nobody has died because somebody did, but you know what? It's just a reminder of how precious and fragile life is, so it's a good truing up. Thanks for asking.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Nebiker?
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to add something that I've been reading some articles recently about maintaining or enhancing our positive emotions, which is not easy at this time. I think we're all affected in some way or other, and I would venture to guess that everyone at this meeting is actually among the most fortunate. But it's still difficult, and what's happening on the national stage is affecting us with consternation and anxiety in different ways. But I've been reading these articles that talk about how just very simple things like getting outside and looking at things in nature in a different way, appreciating the small things, taking a walk, can make a big difference and impact our health and sense of well-being. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that. I know that everybody probably knows that, but just in case, I think it's a good reminder. Also, it is possible that I might be missing some meetings. I don't know when, but someone in my family might be having surgery, and I will be going to look after them. That's everything I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Commissioner Webb, would you like to go next? Not go away, just, we're not hearing you yet, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Webb, we will come back to you. Commissioner Quila, would you like to, are you on the call today?
I am on the call. Can you hear me?
Yes, how are you doing today?
I'm doing, I'm doing fine, and I really don't have anything to add to Commissioner Nebiker's comments and advice. I think that that's very important, and other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Webb?
Thank you. I'm sorry. I had a couple of things. I can't remember whether it was at our last meeting, whether I mentioned the fact that I'm sure everybody has already read about in the paper, that the Executive Director of the Northwest Oregon Housing Authority, which we are a member of in conjunction with Columbia and Tillamook Counties, the Executive Director of NOHA resigned. The very capable Board Chair Nina Reid, who is from Columbia County, has taken over temporarily the Executive Director's position and will continue to do so until the organization can kind of get back on its feet. In the meantime, the Board has hired a company called Quadell, which is a consultancy for housing authorities and can come in and do almost any task that needs to be done in a housing authority. And they've sent several consultants to us to clear up what was a pretty massive, and I don't know the right word, inconsistency in reporting to HUD. And so the good news is that none of the machinations have interrupted the flow of evaluating Section 8 applications. The workflow in terms of getting people into housing has not been interrupted at all. And I'm really very impressed with what Nina Reid has taken over and is doing a great job with in conjunction with the consultants. The consultants also offer folks who will come in as interim directors, and we're, the Board is contemplating that now, and I think we'll probably move forward to do that. So the good news is that all things are proceeding as normal and that client services have not been at all interrupted. Our projects in terms of, we have now three major projects that are being built, one in each county, and none of that is stopping. We Commissioners are going to come forward and be assisting with the projects in our own counties in terms of staff assistance to the developers. I think that's the big news. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I'm Commissioner Sullivan, and I appreciate everybody being here today. I have a conflict with this meeting that I have to do a sound check around 12:30, but then I'll be back with the meeting. So I am going to be speaking briefly at the Board of Forestry meeting, which is going on now in terms of the HCP. So Commissioner Nebiker, if I need to do that for a few minutes, I hope that you can take over for me. I know we haven't had a chance to talk about this previously.
No, we haven't, of course.
Okay, thank you. And let's move now to the topic. The topic on our agenda today is, we have, it looks like Dr. McNichol is here for the Public Health Update. We have about five minutes for that. And then Director Amy Baker is here for the Clatsop Behavioral Healthcare Report, which is about 20 minutes. Then we're going to talk about the appointment of the Property Tax Appeals, BOTA members. And then finally will be the Clatsop County Resiliency Project, which we've scheduled about 30 minutes for. So let's start right in with Dr. McNichol, the Public Health Department, please, report.
Good afternoon, can you hear me? Yes? Okay, great. So, good afternoon, this is Mike McNichol, Clatsop County Public Health. Right now with the COVID response, we've been pretty busy, but things are starting to calm down a little bit now. Right this second, we have had a total of 238 cases. Ninety-seven have recovered so far, and we're still tracking or working with about 118 cases. We, just today, we were notified that Abbott is going to put out a new thing called the Binax Now Testing. So there's a great advantage to that. It's a super quick test, and it's only $5. So we're going to be able to get a bunch of those, and apparently the state is going to give us some. So we're going to know about how many by tomorrow afternoon, and we'll be able to do even more testing faster with better results. And it's supposed to be as accurate as a PCR test, so we're pretty excited about that. We continue to work with our partners on wraparound services. They've been a great resource for us, so we're thankful for that. That's about it for COVID World. I wanted to let you know that the Oregon Public Health Association has given Clatsop County Public Health and the county an award for the Health and Housing Waste Program. There's going to be an award for excellence in our leadership and some sort of environmental piece. So we're pretty excited about that. We'll know more on the 13th of October. So we were recognized for our hard work on that, so pretty excited about that. It's a non-COVID event, so yay.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Any questions?
Commissioner Nebiker?
Well, first I'd like to say congratulations. Work well done. That's been a long time coming, and I know it's very successful, and I think it's wonderful it's being recognized. But I have two questions. Will these speedy tests be available to the general public? Or is it just for the county health department use? That's my first question.
Yeah, so apparently the Governor's going to announce today that they're going to make testing much more available through their guidelines. So anybody, even if you're asymptomatic, can actually get a test. So that's going to widen our ability to tell prevalence in the county, so we're pretty excited about that.
Yeah, that's very exciting. Thank you. That's great. My next question is, is there follow-up for people who have had COVID in the county? Follow-up down the road to see if any, what symptoms persist? Or if there is an effect, adverse effect on their overall health or their ability to work and live a normal life?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm hoping that Oregon Health Authority develops a task force to look at that. I think it's an important piece because the evidence shows that people who are affected as early as last December are still having lasting effects, neurological, physiological. So we're going to have to, somebody's going to have to take a look at that. But right now during the pandemic, it's hard to get a retro look at things because everything is so right now. But eventually, I think, if the vaccine is reliable and safe, and given a few months after that, they will be able to do some of that long-term testing and some of that analysis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
If I may, Madam Chair?
Sure.
So, good question, Commissioner Nebiker. Dr. McNichol, as you go along, I mean, I know that you don't need any additional burdens on your time or plate right now, but what you just said is very interesting. So I hope that we put in a basket someplace contemplating additional funds to support the follow-up that will be essential, as you point out.
Yeah, I'm anticipating that, like we're doing right now, we're having an epidemiologist doing some analysis of our regional COVID cases. As we speak right now, and actually, we're talking about it tomorrow. I think that in the long run, we need that epidemiologist to do more of even a retro view from all of those cases on long-term folks who are symptomatic and have those issues. So I think we'll definitely have to have a discussion with the Board. And if OHA agrees to, I think they'll have to look at it from a regional point of view. They can't afford to count it to county, but they could do it from region to region.
Whoever, however, there will be a cost. There will certainly be a need. Thank you for pointing it out.
Okay, thank you. Dr. McNichol, I saw a headline that Portland has one of the lowest positivity rates next to Seattle or vice versa. Did you see that? Or, I mean, nationwide, that we're, Oregon's doing fairly well? You didn't see that? Maybe I read that wrong. Okay.
You may have, you know, with the, I think Oregonians overall are doing a pretty good job of mask-wearing and following social practices. I think that's what you're seeing, is that as the rate continues to down, as people start wearing masks and find it to not be a complete burden or whatever it is, it's becoming more bogus, as you can see, or as they say, then, you know, I think it will be. I think that's the goal, is if we keep this up long enough. And like Dr. Pousch said, that mask-wearing is actually more effective than the vaccine. So that's the key, is we really have to maintain this for the long term until we really get this under control.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. McNichol? All right, thank you so much for all your work and thank.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I muted myself there, but, okay, let's move on. Amy Baker, are you available, are you ready now?
Yes, I am. I just, I just need the screen sharing.
Okay, Monica, can you help her with that? So this is Amy Baker. The topic is Clatsop Behavioral Healthcare Report.
I just cleared the screen with her. It'll take a moment. There we go. Can you see it? Yes.
Yes.
So my name is Amy Baker, and I'm the Executive Director with Clatsop Behavioral Healthcare. And on the call, we also have Shira Merrilla, who is our Chief Clinical Officer, and she will be co-presenting with me today. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about the efforts that we're making. I think it's a really important conversation right now. And I'm sure, I am sure you all will agree with me that it is probably one of the more pressing issues that we have right now in relation to both the pandemic, the social unrest, the economic situation, and everything else. So I realize this message is optimistic, but we are your bastions of hope. And we, our job is to carry hope for this community. And I want to share with you some of the efforts that we've made since all of this started. Shira, can you take this slide?
Yeah, thanks, Amy. Hi, I'm happy to be here. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about what we did as an organization in response to the pandemic back when this started. So we moved quickly to telehealth services, probably within the first, like, 10 days. We had the majority of our organization working remotely. With exception to clients who are presenting with more acute needs or high needs, we're still offering those services in person. So we moved to a Zoom platform and also created some space within our clinics for clients to be able to come in and access telehealth services and to be able to communicate with their providers who may be located in a different clinic or working from home. So we did that in record speed, I think, and I'm super proud of the organization for that. Let's see, community outreach. We contacted almost 3,000 clients within the first, like, 30 to 45 days of the pandemic. They weren't active clients. They're folks that had discharged from our care previously, so they weren't people that we had regular contact with. But we called about 3,000 people to just kind of do like welfare checks, to connect people with our counselors who were providing psychological first aid, as well as to connect folks with resources in the community, or just to have like a quick, you know, supportive conversation to normalize whatever it is that they were experiencing, to talk about some things that are pretty common symptoms in a time period like this, and just to provide sort of a lifeline for people. So 3,000 is a big number, and also pretty proud of us for those outreach efforts. We also implemented a warm line for child and family services. So all of the clients that we have that are engaged in our child and family department, we implemented a 24/7 warm line so that parents and family members can get ahold of a master's-level clinician 24/7 if they're having challenges at home, if there are behavioral crises, if they just need a supportive ear to talk to someone because they're having a hard time getting their kid to go to bed or go to school or eat or have a routine. We just wanted to be able to connect with families as much as possible, as people are so isolated right now, especially our kids. And also in an effort to not inundate our mobile team with an influx in crisis calls for that program specifically. So that's been pretty successful. We also provided cell phones to folks in the community who did not have phones or phone plans so that they were able to access their care, whether that's their care with us or their telehealth with other providers in the community. So they were able to come into our clinics and get some like aid and some IT support in figuring out how to use their phones, get phones, and get set up to be able to engage in virtual treatment. And lastly, we are working on equity and inclusion, specifically in response to COVID-19 as we know that our communities of color in Clatsop County and across our country are more severely impacted. We're talking specifically about what our responsibility is in regards to health equity. And we also hired an equity and inclusion consultant who works for the People's Institute out of Portland, who is assisting our organization in making sure that we're, that we're providing the best inclusive and competent care to everyone that lives in Clatsop County. That's all.
Thanks, Shira. So this graph kind of shows you what our new clients admitted to care. And I would say the, on the right, those little categories aren't as important as, but basically, this is for substance use disorder, it's mental health, it's kids, and it's adults. And you can see that we had a drop in April and May, and it started to pick up in June and July. And while the numbers don't look as high as what it feels, our experience has been that the acuity or the severity of need has increased since all of this started. One of our benchmarks that we look at is retention of clients in care. Obviously, our goal is, as you all know, making that first call for help is not an easy call to make. And when we get folks into care, we want to keep them in care. And so on the left, you'll see that between January and February of 2020, we had 122 new clients. Six months later, 71% of those clients were still active in care. And that, I would say, the kind of the national benchmark for what's considered acceptable is somewhere between 70 and 80%. On the right-hand column, these are all of the clients who came in between January and July. And 74% remain active and 26% discharged. Our, this is for the North Coast Crisis Respite and Residential Center. We had a little bit of a reduction in April and May because it was a little scary to take new residents in if we didn't know what their COVID status was. In June and July, the hospitals figured out how to start doing testing so that at least we had a sense of whether or not somebody was coming in with a positive rate. We set up the North Coast, we set it up so that we have a specific area in which new clients coming in are isolated for several days in case they are positive. They don't transmit it to other clients. Our adult population tend to have a lot of comorbidities, and we are really trying to prevent an outbreak there as much as possible. We've also seen an increase in our mobile crisis services. And I want to spend a little bit of time talking about this. This only goes through July 20, and this is basically not, this is not a count of heads. This is a count of services, and it's services that are pulled out of our electronic health record. And you can see that there's some inexplicable seasonality to this, why we had 110 services in September. I couldn't really tell you, but basically, I think this graph is important in terms of showing a trend line. And then, and then for August, it actually came down a little bit, and I'm not exactly sure why that is. But one of the, one of the phenomenas that we have experienced with this team is that, is that the acuity of the client is higher than what we've seen previously. And typically, in the summer months, we'll see a lot of folks who come from out-of-area into Clatsop County. I'd say on average, it's maybe 30% in the summer are out-of-area folks. And actually, what we've seen is that some of our long-term clients really destabilized. And that's, that's been challenging because those usually take longer to remedy. It's more complicated. It may have to do with available housing. Social circles are not available as they once were. And so response to a crisis can be anywhere from a couple of hours to several, several days in order to resolve a situation. This shows the total crisis calls for the green column. And the number of folks that we met with in the community and stayed in the community is the yellowish. And the, this column right here, this is remained in the hospital, and these are the folks that we saw in the jail. And one of the conversations that we've been having internally, as many folks around the country have also been having, is what is the role of mobile crisis? And when, when should we be responding? When should law enforcement be responding? And I recently had an experience where somebody in the community pointed out that we need to be more transparent with the community about what the resources are that we have in order to be able to do this. And so essentially, at any given time, we have one primary responder. And then during business hours, we have a, we have a program manager. And that's to, that's to cover the entire county. And we think that if that, if our mobile crisis team was greatly expanded, we would be far more reliable and dependable for our law enforcement partners. We would have shorter response times. And we think that we could intervene in behavioral health crises where we have the training and the expertise as opposed to having law enforcement folks who are, who don't have masters in social work. I know that Lain County has a really good model where they have a medic and a master's-level clinician who respond as opposed to law enforcement. And they've worked that out through their 911 dispatch. And of course, that would be more challenging in this county because we have several. But we, we want to be a part of this conversation, and we want to be transparent with the community that while we have a mobile crisis team, and when we're involved, it works. We have good outcomes. We can often de-escalate folks. Sometimes we have to send them to the hospital. But we think we're the right ones to intervene. We just are not resourced to the level that we need to be more effective. Housing, as you all know, is a significant issue in this community, probably more so than other counties around the state. We took a look at some of our data, and we found that approximately 6% of all CBH clients are considered homeless or transient. So this does not include the folks who are inadequately housed, who are couch surfing, who are living with relatives. This counts as people who are living on the street specifically. And within this number, and a lot of, a lot of our clients who are homeless or transient are also have serious mental illness. And these are the clients who are least able to protect themselves, take care of themselves. And it's, I would say, frustrating and scary for us in trying to help them when we don't have the adequate resources. So of those, 6%, 40% of them went on to be housed. It could take anywhere from a couple of months to a year. The 60% who weren't housed, most of those folks ended up dropping out of care. And I'm sure you've heard of Maslow's hierarchy. But basically, before we can even address somebody But basically, before we can even address somebody's mental health or mental well-being, basic needs have to be met, and housing is one of those basic needs. So this is my, this is my good news slide. So we recently had, well, we have audits every year. Obviously, we're not for profit, we have our books audited by an independent auditor. And they were able to provide with us the number that 78% of all of the funds that we receive go directly to services. And that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good number for a not-for-profit. We have expanded our ability to be culturally responsive. We've hired a bilingual, bicultural therapist to work with our Latinx Hispanic population. And we've also reallocated one of our staff's member staff members to do specific outreach with that community to partner with Consejo Hispano and also public health. And then lastly, we recently, as of this week, hired a contractor to help us with the housing piece. The board and our leadership team made the decision that if we really want to expand housing options for folks with mental health issues, then we have to assign that task to somebody within the organization. The person that we are contracting with, his name is Neil Rotman, he's got 35 years of experience in behavioral health. He's developed lots of housing projects in his time. And he will be starting with us next week to start working on this. And Teresa, you could probably take it off share screen now if you want to, or maybe I have to do that. There we go.
Have we? Is it just me, or did somebody, something happened to everybody's camera?
I can't see you.
Looks like it, something happened. Oh, there, everybody's coming back. Commissioner Nebuchur, I think maybe you, maybe you like.
Are there questions for Amy? Yes, Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Amy, as I said, it's always good to hear from you. I can't see you anymore, but if you put if you put, there you are, hello, hello, hello. So a couple of things. This slide on expanding crisis services, I'm very interested in that. I'm also interested in how data about diversity, equity and inclusion impact both crisis services and our capacity to get housing money here. Because I think you probably know Oregon Housing and Community Services is profoundly committed to that diversity, equity and inclusion work, so that will help us get money for housing. So I, yeah, you're clear on that. Okay, so we got that part taken care of. Expanding crisis services. I really want us to go forward with this. I want to hear more specific data because without data, we can't define the problem or put it into the solution. And if your person is interested, but I'm not quite done with housing. We're having a housing focus group task force this afternoon, we'll be going forward with housing. I hope that your person is integrated into whatever we're doing at the county for that. So then back to the number, how much is it going to cost? And what will we be able to do with expanded crisis services? You also pointed out, we don't have consolidated 911. So there's another item for our county bucket list is getting consolidated 911.
I I think there's, I think there's different ways of of going about this. I don't, I don't know that that we're in a place of deciding on the model. Like, there's there's different models that have been applied in different counties. I know that we were going to try to do the the mental health clinician right along with law enforcement. But given how many law enforcement departments we have, it makes that piece really challenging. I I think if we were able to figure out how to have two teams, a North County team and a South County team, that would help us in terms of response times. But but I think if this is something that we're going to actualize, it probably would take a work group that includes law enforcement around figuring out what what would work for Clotset County.
Swell, let's do it.
Commissioner Webb has a question.
Yes. A great report, Amy. As we are working increasingly at the Housing Authority with our new projects of which are tend to be larger and a more diverse number and types of units. But of course, we also know that one of the things the state likes us to do and to give us funding for are three-bedroom units when in our community, that isn't always what we need. But I'm extremely grateful for the memorandum of understanding that you all have been willing to sign for for our projects. But I worry whether or not you all have the resources to implement them. You know, we have a very robust project being planned in Warrington. And so how, you know, how do you fund that? You know, if if we say to you, okay, we need, you know, we're talking about 42 units and et cetera. But these things are not constant, they're, you know, so so how how will you have the resources to respond to those kinds of cooperative agreements?
So I think that's a fantastic question, Commissioner Webb, and I think that's the right question. Certainly, OHA has some designated funding that falls in a category called supported housing. I think if 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 any of these projects are going to work, the housing projects, we will likely need to staff them. For the the what was Chelsea Gardens and is now being called the Trillium Project, there are five units that are designated for CBH clients. Given that there's, if only it's only five units, probably, we're going to have folks who are, you know, well attached to services, but we're not going to staff it. Because there just aren't enough, there aren't enough spaces. So in order for us to like staff a housing project, we're looking at needing probably at least like 20 beds in order to in order to be able to do that. So so it kind of changes the the acuity of need of the client depending on how many you have and and how they're placed and all of that. And I think the partnership with NOHA is extremely important to us. Because I know there, for sure, we do not want to be in the position of doing property management. We want to do treatment services. It's a, it's a conflicted role. And then also, NOHA is the one that has the 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 project-based vouchers for individuals who don't have an income source. And so that's also a really important part of any kind of housing project that we might do.
Okay, so it looks as if we need to be, we, meaning the county, need to be attentive to this ongoing need. Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, Amy. This, this was really, I I actually had a number of questions, I think that you, but you answered most of them. And could I ask you to say a little bit more? Because you mentioned the seasonality. I've always, I mean, it always amazes me that, for instance, our law enforcement throughout the county doesn't staff up over over the tourist season, which I think is incredible that they manage not to do that. But you mentioned briefly that, in fact, in especially for the crisis services, you all do see a number of non-residents.
So I think one of the, you have captured that perfectly. And one of the the common frustrations for all of us is that most of our funding is based on population. It's based on census. And census doesn't account for that influx that happens in the summer. And so whatever funding formula that we have for like all these different services, it's it's based on population.
And and do those people tend to to then stay if they are in crisis? What happens, I mean, do they then float out of the system? You know, how does that work?
There's a lot of folks who come for the summer, and when the rains come, they they tend to leave, and they and they may may or may not come back the following summer. The the piece that gets tricky is that if we have individuals who get in trouble with the law, and then they're and then they're connected to Clotset County, either because they've got a probation officer or something to that effect, then we might be in the position of holding on to them. And and there are also folks who kind of float out here because they have family members out here. But it's, it's, it's hard to, at least from my experience, for a county this size, we have a lot of folks who kind of float in and out. And I think that's probably typical for some counties, not eastern Oregon counties. And it's a unique phenomena, I think, to us and also probably the I-5 corridor.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much, as always.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb, and thank you, Amy Baker. I, this has been a very good discussion, and I'm very happy to hear the debate of putting phone calls, also families. Some temporary things can come in and talk to you.
Commissioner Sullivan?
We are, we are coming at the end of our time. Oh, is everyone not hearing me?
Yeah, you're you're not coming through clearly.
I don't know what to do about that.
Do you have your other device on, maybe, or? I can send Jim in to to check it, check it out.
Okay, should I?
Yes, Commissioner Nebuchur.
I'll, I'll take over if that's all right. Okay.
Thank you.
So if there were no further questions for Amy, we, thank you, Amy, very much for that report. Also, next is the appointment of, I believe this is right, the Board of Property Tax Appeals BOP members. And so I don't know if county manager or Monica is going to.
Tracy is on is on the call.
Tracy, okay, thank you.
So before you today is just a discussion time for appointment to the Board of Property Tax Appeals. And it has to have to be appointed by October 15th every year. So what we do is we need appointment by you guys. And we put out for applications on July 26. The deadline to submit the application was September 18. We had only two at that point. I then extended it to September 23. And so we have a total of three applicants at this time. I've attached the applications. Basically, it's all three that served last year, and they're all willing to come back again this year. And their term will begin on the date of appointment, which would be October 14th at our next board meeting and end on June 30th of 21. Any, any questions?
So is this something that we will have at our regular Board of Commission meeting?
Yes, on the 14th, yes.
Thank you.
No, you're still sounding muffled and.
Okay, so next we have our resiliency project. And.
Monica, are you, are you going to be presenting?
I was waiting for Commissioner Nebuchur, I wasn't sure if she was done.
Thank you.
No problem. Ted and myself and Dean will be presenting, and so I'll go ahead and let Ted pick it off.
This is Ted McLean, Public Works Director. So we've been talking about resiliency and alternate routes, facility moves for a long time. Concerning evacuation and alternate routes, we started talking about this back in 2012. And the strategic plan where it identified the countywide bypass truck route and evacuation road. And over that time, in 2015, we updated our TSP to take those things into account of evacuation routes as well as alternate routes to get around our community better. And then in 2016, we realized the, as Cascadia started to come about that discussion, we realized our facility was in the inundation zone. So with the board's permission, we began a search for property. And we also looked at, at the same time, ways or routes to help us get around better and alternate ways to get around and evacuation routes. Routes that would help us to evacuate during an event, and then routes that would help us to recover after an event. So we brought to the board some property in thinking about our facility. We brought to the board back in 2019, February, a list of properties that we were looking at. But first off, we developed a criteria to try to search for those properties. What's the, where where should our facility be located? So we looked at, there's several different things that we looked at in criteria. Out of the inundation zone, of course, the availability of land, the availability of public access, adequate size and shape for our operation, 15 to 50 acres to accommodate the current future storage materials, debris removal, equipment, circulation, and so on. That, as we looked at that, we started off with a site the same size as we have now. But then realizing what would happen in one of these type of events, we realized that we needed a larger site. Another thing that we looked at was being located on the west side of both the Lewis and Clark and Young's River. We have facilities in our other districts that can help us manage the roads on the other sides of those rivers. But we, this facility in specific, was looking at how to help South County recover. We looked at the terrain and geological hazards, the availability of multiple ways to and from our facility for redundant access in an emergency, availability of utilities to serve the site, the avoidance of extensive and costly wetland mitigation. If gold exceptions were required, we needed to select a property that would most likely receive approval from the state and our board and the agencies. A site that wouldn't negatively impact or be impacted by future surrounding development. So traffic, safety, noise, potential ability to co-locate with other county departments like our EOC or our planning department and building codes, and the overall cost for development for a turnkey site. So in with that criteria, we've searched the areas that we thought would be the best to potential for a facility. The first site was the North Coast Business Park. And there were varying reasons why we felt like this wouldn't work for our facility, but it is property already owned by the county. But the cost to develop that site was very expensive, upwards of one and a half to two million to mitigate the wetlands, to provide what property that we could develop into a public works facility. There was also the type of businesses and development in that area that constrained that site as an inappropriate location. There was the Dolphin Avenue ODOT site, ODOT's facility is off of Dolphin. And so we sat down and spoke to them. And they are actually growing out of their facility. They're looking for more property to be able to get some of their resources out of the inundation zone as well and realize that this wouldn't be a site that would be preferred or that would hold both of us as well as having all our tools in one spot isn't really the best thing to do. We looked at the Nikas property and there's, Jim Nikas owns two properties. One is a 64 acre site that we looked at that's across from, it's to the east of the sorting yard. That property has since sold, so it's not really in our discussion now, but that's what we had looked at. Jim Nikas also owns Crown Camp. And that's a 29 to 30 acre site in an F-80 zone, so it would require a goal exception as well. But the property is so far out that it's really inconvenient for the public as it would serve for a public works facility. But it is a strategic site that we've talked about that in the event of a disaster, it would be a strategic site for an emergency response facility or area to stage things or a gathering spot. And then Public Works could also use that facility for stockpiling debris removal and emergency response. The other site that we looked at is the Warrant Fiber and I Guard Logging Sorting Yard. And this is a 51 acre site. It's in an F-80 zone. It too would require a goal exception. There are parts of the property that are susceptible to seismic event, but the majority of the property is in good shape for us to be able to have a public works facility there. We also looked at the Angus property. It's off of Lucas Lane, so it's right next to the sorting yard. That was a 20 acre, 28 acre site and it was zone AF, which would require a goal exception. But that property too has sold, so that's really out of the discussion. So those are the properties that we looked at. We had our engineering team, Dean Karenin and our engineering staff look at all the properties in those areas. And these were the only properties that were really large enough and available enough for us to build a facility. So then we have public outreach, which Monica will help us with that.
Thanks. So we started trying to reach out to the community to kind of get some feedback on this project. And sorry, I'm trying to get my screen to show what I would like it to. And I always seem to have this problem. So we started on August 13th. And with that, we had a public meeting virtually. We had over 60 community members in attendance. And we got a lot of good feedback. We had a lot of questions asked. And then we've been trying to keep our resiliency project website up to date with those frequently asked questions as they've come in. On August 24th, we sent out a countywide questionnaire to all the residents within Clatsop County. And we collected those responses through September 24th. And we've continued to have some trickle in here. And so through those, through those questions or through those questionnaires, we received back 2,654 respondents. And the first question that was asked was, do you support moving the public works facility out of the tsunami inundation zone? And I apologize because I'm trying to get my screen to share, but for whatever reason, it's not popping up. So I'm just going to kind of go ahead and read what we have in your agenda packet. We have had some updates though, as I mentioned, because we collected more yesterday. So of the question, do you support moving the public works facility out of the tsunami inundation zone? The response to that was 69% said yes, 28% said no, and 3% said that they were not sure. The question then was, do you think that the Lewis and Clark Sorting Yard would be an appropriate location for relocating the public works facility? And with the updated information, 29% said yes, 25% said no, and 46% said not sure. As we've been going through this questionnaire process, we did receive a lot of helpful feedback and will continue to take that feedback into consideration. But I've had several people explain to us that they responded not sure because they didn't know where some of these locations were. You know, it's, the term sort yard is known by many, but not known by all. And so trying to identify it by another name or by the address, along with Main Line North, Main Line South, and Pipeline, we learned created some confusion for people because again, they didn't know where these locations were. So moving on, the next question was, how proactive should the county be in pursuing emergency and alternate routes in preparation for a seismic event? 55% of the respondents said very proactive, 31% said somewhat, 12% said not proactive, and 2% said not sure. In regards to whether or not the county should acquire existing private roads for alternate or emergency routes, if they're currently available, 65% said yes, 30% said no, and 5% said not sure. In regards to whether or not those roads should be improved to county standards, 53% said yes, 18% said no, 18% felt that this was not applicable, and 11% were not sure. Then if the alternate routes were obtained and improved, the question was, should they be open for general public access? 64% said yes, 28% said no, and 8% said not sure. The next question was, if you could please rank the following potential projects in order of importance, with one being the most important and four being the least important. In regards to relocating the public works facility, 44% thought that was the most important. 2%, or I'm sorry, 7% thought that it was the second most important. 4% thought it was the third most important. And 25% felt it was the fourth most important. And then there were people who just were not sure. In regards to Pipeline Road, which would be the route that would take you from Highway 202 out to Highway 30, 17% felt that that was the most important, 16% felt it was second most important, 11% thought it was third most important, 26% felt it was fourth most important, and 30% were not sure. The Lewis and Clark Main Line North section was, that's the, that's the road that would be running parallel with Lewis and Clark as well as Highway 101. 7% felt that that was the most important. 22% felt it was second most. 24% felt it was third most, 15% fourth most, and 32% not sure. And then the Lewis and Clark Main Line South section, which the north section is, and Ted can correct me if I'm wrong, the north section is only approximately two miles and the south section is approximately five and a half miles. Is that correct, Ted? Yeah.
Yeah.
Of the south section, 8% felt it was the most important, 16% felt second most, 19% felt third most, and 25% felt fourth most, and 32% were not sure. So we got some good feedback, but we had a lot of people who were still kind of unclear on the intentions of the project. To kind of follow up on that, just as a reminder of where we currently are, the county is currently under contract for potential acquisition of one property and has a less formal letter of intent for a second property. We're currently under contract with Warrant Fiber for the purchase of the sort yard, which would be where the public works facility would be relocating to. That has a due diligence period that ends at the end of January of 2021. And the other property is a proposed, that we have a letter of intent is with Greenwood Resources. And that is for the proposed recovery route in an effort to reach South County. And that has a due diligence period that expires in May of 2022, I believe it is. So at this point in time, since we have received some feedback from the community, we are continuing to do our due diligence on both of these properties. But before we continue to move too far along in the process, we want to continue to get feedback from the board. And we're now seeking direction from the board in regards to how you would like us to proceed with both of these current agreements that we have in place. The options before you would be to continue with the current due diligence process on all existing signed agreements until those expire or adjust our project goals to focus on the relocation of the public works facility and defer the recovery routes for future projects or to just put all resiliency projects on hold. And so at this point in time, we are open for questions and discussion as you feel necessary.
Commissioner Nebuch? I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thompson, I'm sorry.
I see that Senator Johnson is on the call and I wonder if she had something to say about all of this. I assume this is why she's on the call with us.
I don't, I don't know why my screen won't share that.
I'm just trying to defer to Senator Johnson in this matter.
Senator Johnson, did you want to speak? It looks like she's on the phone currently. So maybe we can come back to her.
Okay, well then I.
Sorry, I, you guys had muted me, I'm sorry. I am just on the meeting as an observer. I have had a lot of constituent contact about this issue. And I was wanting to inform myself by listening to the board deliberations. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so as a Clatsop County resident, I am very interested in having resiliency about catastrophic events. I'm really all for that. As the District 5 Commissioner for the southern half of Clatsop County, I'm really interested in anything that improves access and resilience and just the capacity for people in South County to be able to be included in resilience and recovery efforts. So I'm all for that. As a, as a good person and a responsibly elected official, I have no desire to create a catastrophe in anybody else's neighborhood. So I've had a lot of feedback, a lot of feedback from people who are very concerned about the impact of what we do for the first and second part considerations with what's the impact on their neighborhood. And when I look at the options before us, I am not at all interested in option three, to put all resiliency projects on hold. But when I look at option one and option two, the first two bullets, I'm not clear of the impact on each of those for the neighborhood livability issues raised by the constituents in that area. And I'm interested in understanding that. Thank you.
So my understanding, and perhaps you can help me with this, is the first one is that we just continue in the same path that we've been going, correct? The second one is to take some time to adjust the goals about relocating public works facilities and perhaps defer the recovery routes for future projects. And then the third one is just we cease with all of that. Is that correct?
Yeah, if I could. Thanks. So there are, out of those two options, Commissioner Sullivan, one option is to continue the diligence on the two pieces that Monica noted, which is the south portion of the Main Line and then the sort yard. So we don't have any option on the north part, which is the one where there are residences and would have the greatest residential impact. So we don't have any options on that portion of the Main Line. So if you wanted us to continue diligence processes, we would be doing it on the south portion of the Main Line and then the sort yard. So to your question, Commissioner Thompson, the piece with the most impact on the residents is that north piece, which we do not have an option on and we are not pursuing. And so the other option though, is to really just focus on the priority one for public works, which is really getting out of the inundation zone and having a strategy to relocate facilities. And so if the board decided that the appetite right now, given where we are with COVID and everything else, that focusing on that first would be a big enough lift for us. And the option is to let us continue to do diligence on that site. As we do that, we can also look at if there's any new options out there and just tackle that now. And so, so that's kind of what the options are short of just telling us that why don't we just take a break and we will revisit all this at a future time. So I think that the resiliency is a legitimate public policy issue. I think, you know, talking about it and having plans is important. As we've learned with the pandemic, something that you think may happen only every 100, 200 years does knock on our door. So I just wanted to clarify that the portion, which is the north portion of the Main Line, is not part of what we have any contract on.
So if I could just follow up to clarify, Madam Chair. Thank you, County Manager. That helps me understand more fully. So that option is off the table, the one that was generating so much consternation among the neighboring residents. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, so that section is not part of what we are currently working on. And Monica can also weigh in on that, so.
Yes, we have never had a signed letter of intent or purchase sale agreement because it was not a piece of property that we were able to come to an agreement on. So we haven't had any signed letters there. There's any, the only, the only we have a signed letter on is the south portion of the Main Line and the, what is called the sort yard.
Okay, thank you very much, both of you, for that. What would help me as a commissioner to answer your question more completely would be, I see the words, but I need maps and annotated with cost data to help me evaluate. So I need more data, but I assume that's forthcoming. Okay, I see head nodding, thank you.
Commissioner Webb? Commissioner Webb?
It sounds, I have been briefed extensively by the Public Works Department and other county staff about the history of this effort. And it has always concerned me that our emergency preparedness program has not always, to my knowledge, identified sites that will ensure resiliency for us, both in the short term and in the long term. And I'm not sure there is anything more important on my agenda than being prepared in a resilient manner to ensure the safety of the citizens I serve. I think we're looking at issues that are not just anymore about a Cascadia event. We're looking at climate change as well, which as the waters rise, are going to first inundate our present site probably more clearly as our waters rise. I think it would be irresponsible of this board to back off from all of the work that has been done in the last couple of years, well, what, Ted, for the last 20 years, right? That the staff has been working on this. I think it's time for us to move forward. I think it's time to relocate the public works facility. I'm not sure we have done a good enough job in helping our citizens understand how important our public works department and facilities and other material is in the face of any climate emergency. And I think it's time for us to get moving on this. We have narrowed it down to two sites. We have eliminated a very controversial site. I don't know, our project goals, in my estimation, have not changed. We're looking for the safety of our citizens, for all of our citizens. And we have responded to neighborhood concerns about some of the sites. We backed off. I think the survey that was done, I think you all know that I'm not a big fan of surveys unless they are very professionally done. And I was really quite pleased that there were very positive responses on the part of our citizens in terms of ensuring our resiliency, ensuring protection for our public works, et cetera. So I have, I believe we have extensively addressed the concerns of our citizens, most of whom, the negative ones, incidentally, were in my district, so I'm willing to take that hit. But people's response, I think in terms of the countywide survey, was very supportive. And I think it's time for this commission to start putting our money and our instructions to our staff consistent with where our mouth is. And I don't think we can wait any longer to proceed, not only with this process, but also with making our emergency management plan more robust in terms of identifying facilities. I would greatly support the first option that the staff has given us and thank them for the enormous amount of work that they have put into this over a series of years, and especially during the past year and a half. I think they've done a great job, and we need to support their recommendation number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Any other commissioners like to speak? Commissioner Nebiker?
I concur with Commissioner Webb.
Thank you. Commissioner Quayle, we haven't heard from you today, bearing on this issue.
He's a caller, and I know that we had to mute some of the callers because of background noise.
I just said mute all the callers.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Quayle, would you like to weigh in on this? Okay, Commissioner Thompson, do you have a feeling one way or the other on this?
Well, I definitely want to go forward with resilience planning, but again, I want to see maps, I want to see data associated with the maps. I just want to look at particular details, but of course, I want to go ahead. I mean, are you kidding me? That's why I got elected, was to do resilience for current outlook, yes.
And I would just like, sorry, Commissioner, I would just like to reiterate that no matter which phase or which recommendation the board chooses, the staff is going to continue to do community outreach, we're going to continue to gather the information, we're going to continue to have meetings so that way we can get that feedback and direction. So this isn't, you know, once you give us, okay, move in this direction, it doesn't mean that we aren't going to continue to get that input from the community, and we're going to continue to keep things updated on the Resiliency Project website. So this doesn't mean that we're done with our community outreach. It just means we're trying to gain more information in regards to what the direction the board would like us to go.
Yeah, and if I could just add really quickly is that we're still in the diligence process. So no matter what your board, what direction you give, if you say, let's continue to look at the sorting yard as a potential site for the relocation of the public works facility, and let's look at the south portion and finish our diligence there, which that's a longer term, you know, process, there could still be something that we uncover that would make our recommendation be not to move forward with a specific site. And so, and that's why I think that, you know, we will look to see if there are other sites that we haven't been aware of that could be potential for the public works facility is just part of our diligence process, because you never know what you're going to find. And so part of prudence is just being prepared for those contingencies that we hope don't happen, but oftentimes do. And then, as Monica said, we're not, there's been no decisions. The board giving us direction today is not a decision about whether or not something happens in January or beyond, but at least it just gives staff direction about the work that we need to be focusing on over the next months.
Now, Webb?
There's another issue that I would just like to mention that I think was of great concern to a lot of our citizens, and that is the issue of money, of who's going to pay for this, how much is this project going to cost us, et cetera. And I think that after 40 years of planning and executing infrastructure development in several places in this country, I would like us to be very clear that putting a price tag on projects is always very difficult. We live in a state where it's very difficult for us to borrow money to do anything, and so we live within our means as a public entity. And I think we need to explain to our citizens that it is virtually impossible to anticipate almost at any point in time what a project is going to cost until you're committed to it. And we will not commit to irresponsible spending. Legally, we really can't, and this board certainly would never do that. So I think we need to talk a little bit in our public dialogue about that issue and about how we go about planning. And in fact, I mean, Ted, tell me if I'm wrong, but you know, we've been putting money away, right, for this project for a pretty long time. Am I wrong in that? Haven't we been building in that state?
Yes, we've been saving our money to move our facility and doing it in a way that it won't cost the public something, we won't have to go out for bonds or so.
Right, right. So as I say, I think that's if we're going to continue an outreach, and I would like the board to be very up to date all the time about this outreach program and be involved in perhaps designing it, et cetera, because our phones are the first ones that ring. And I think, I see Commissioner Thompson laughing because she, it's our phones that have been ringing off the hook during this whole process. And so I would like very much for the commission to be on board and well informed. And I do suggest that this whole issue of finance, the message be explained to our citizens so that they fully understand it.
And I just like, I'm delighted for those phone calls, so thank you. Not always perfectly delighted, but really delighted to get them. So thanks to everybody who took the time and thoughtful and energetic communication they all did.
And I would just like to encourage, we do have the frequently asked questions on the Resiliency Project website, and it does address the financing piece of it. And so if there is information that we can improve on that particular question, please let us know. I know that there has been a lot of feedback from the community in regards to not getting the message out there enough, and we are open to suggestions on how to improve getting our message out there. You know, we've tried social media, we've tried the Daily Astorian, we've tried our website. And so if there are other suggestions, we're open to that feedback, so that way we can try and reach as many of our citizens as possible, so that way we can get that input and support from them.
Thank you, Monica. For myself, I also believe that however, whatever we can do to prepare is utmost important. I know that the staff has done a tremendous amount of work on this already. I would encourage to continue the process, but in a way that's flexible, that as we go forward, it is determined that this and that doesn't work, that you come back to the board and discuss that. And I also think we need to be mindful that we are in the middle of a worldwide pandemic that is taking an awful lot of oxygen out of the air, and that we need to work in a way that is doable and sustainable for our staff. And so I leave it, that's my caution, that we have, we do have to pay attention to emergency management, absolutely, but we also are in the middle of emergency ongoing, that we're taking up an awful lot of time and staff energy and resources. So I don't, it's a balancing act. I hope that the neighbors that are most upset about the north route are feeling a little more relieved today that that's off the table at this time. And so I guess I would need to know a little bit more about the whole project, but I would say continue doing as you can, as you see fit with working on this. Does anybody else have any other comments? Does that help? Is that helpful to the staff? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I just, if I could really, Commissioner Sullivan, I just want to, you know, I know this is a topic that does bring out a lot of strong feelings, and you know, staff is very sensitive to that. Staff is working really hard to try to provide information to the public and information to the board so that ultimately the board feels like they have been able to hear from the public and that the public has had the opportunity to be informed, and that ultimately the board can make a policy decision on behalf of the residents. And so, you know, we are trying to really honor every part of this sacred relationship between us and the public. And so I know this is a hot topic for some. We're trying to navigate that in a way that is respectful to all, and that the conversation is really open to all. So I just want to say we're going to continue walking this together, and we'll look forward to having further conversations as we learn more.
Thank you, County Manager. I appreciate that. It looks like we are coming to the end of this, so for this work session, we will adjourn. And I appreciate everybody being here and the presentations. Thank you very much for everybody's input, and thank you for coming to the meeting today.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This meeting is adjourned.